Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a public hearing on the adoption of the final millage and budget on today, Tuesday, September 13, 2022. Would you please stand with me, if you're able, and pledge the allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This hearing that we have every year at this time is the real, almost final, if you will, on a budget process that has lasted all year. Florida statute 200.065 per N2 per N E states that the School Board of Sarasota County, Florida, will soon consider a budget for 2022-23. A public hearing to make a decision on the budget and taxes will be held on September 13, 2022, at 1980 Landings Boulevard, Sarasota, Florida. During such discussion, the governing body shall hear comments regarding the proposed millage rate. The general public shall be allowed to speak and to ask questions prior to adoption of any measure by the governing board. The governing body shall adopt its tentative or final millage rate prior to adopting its tentative or final budget. Statement regarding the 2022 final millage and 2022-23 final budget. The 2022 proposed required local effort millage rate represents an 8.10% increase from last year's rolled-back millage rate. The total 2022 proposed millage rate represents a 15.67% increase from last year's rolled-back millage rate. The operating millage is required to hire staff for the school district, pay negotiated salary, and fringe benefits to staff the cost of fuel, electricity, and other goods and services. Before we get started with the hearing of citizens, I'd like to call Bonnie Penner, our CFO, forward to make some general comments. Mrs. Penner.
Good evening. Is that on or no? Red light on? Okay. I think I get you wrong every time. Okay. What I would like to do is really go over the totality of today's agenda as a precursor to this meeting, simply because there are a lot of things on here, and they really all meld together and are important to be taken as one, even though we have to approve them separately. So the very first thing you have as agenda item number five is the adoption of budget amendments. And what this document is, this budget amendment, is it amends the tentative budget that was adopted in late July, and it shows you where the changes are from that budget to the final budget. And one of the most significant changes, because most of them are just minor changes among line items, the most significant change is to increase the general fund budget by $1 million, which was what had been discussed to help with teachers' supply funds. So that $1 million is the only net impact of that general fund budget amendment. You also have in your packet, or as one of your items to approve, let me see what number that it is. Nope, I think it's part of it. Okay, I'm not sure what one it is. This document in your packet is called the ESE 139. And I just wanted to show you this. This is the official budget in the prescribed format that is sent out by Department of Education. So this is exactly what the Department of Education requires that we complete for the budget. This 300-page document is the document that is prepared. So this final budget book is getting adopted by the board tonight. It's not been posted on the website because it's not been approved by the board. So we would be amiss if we did post this final budget book under our regular budget reports, because it has not yet been adopted by the board. This is an enhanced version of the tentative budget book, which is on the website under our budget reports, and as was provided and adopted in late July. Again, the numbers, the budget has changed by the amounts in the budget amendments, and there are additional items that have been added in this budget book. So it's not a change in the budget, per se. It's really just, again, additional information as it has come about. You have two, one is a change, one is an additional, an add to this, and these have already been provided to Ms. Tompkins, so that the online version is updated. Wanted to make sure, because this is something we absolutely have to include in our budget book, is, and the ladies sitting back here do such a great job of making sure this happens, this is our distinguished budget presentation award. And this is what we will be applying for, for this upcoming year. So this shows where we received it for the July 1, 2020 budget, as well as the July 1, 2021 budget. We're waiting on for the 2022, or am I a year behind? Okay, so it's the last two years, so their dates are a little different. But we will be applying for it, again, this upcoming year. And then you also have, these are some supplemental schedules for the capital outlay plan, and so pages 235 through 242, if you could please replace those in your book. If you would like us to get you a new book, we are more than happy to do that. We just didn't want to replace it, knowing that some folks probably have some notes in their book. Just want to go over a few of the things that are in the book, so that we know where to find stuff. On page 27, we have a summary of all of the different funds that we have in our district. So you can see, we have, it's not a million for budget, because I always approach the budget as to how much we're planning to spend. We are actually planning to spend $1 billion, I'm sorry, saying a million, not a billion, $1 billion 84 million is what the budgeted appropriations are for. Now, almost $70 million of that is for our Internal Service Fund, which is where we're operating our self-insurance plans. So that's where we're paying for health claims, where we're paying for automobile claims, all of those that we do as a special, as a self-insurance fund. Our special revenue fund is $145 million of that billion-dollar budget, and those are grants, as well as our school food service program. And later in the book, I'll show you where you can find a listing of those grants, so you can see the different types of allocations that are included in that. Our capital projects budget, this year is going to be a little bit higher. We've got it budgeted at $287 million. That's because we'll have some large projects and some, the beginning of at least two schools to be constructed, to fund those. Shortly, we'll be coming back and talking to you about some debt that will be issued in order to fund those schools. Again, we have a debt service fund, which is where we pay existing debt, which is getting ready to drop off. That's $33 million. And of course, what we're all interested in is our general fund, which has total expenditures of $549 million. And again, when we talked in July, we were at $548 million. We've got that extra million dollar in there, $1 million in there for the teacher classroom supply fund. This budget, the general fund budget, is anticipated to end with a fund balance of 14.81%. So it's down just a little bit from where we closed out the 21-22 year, which was 16.44%. You will see in, again, in the budget book, the executive summary has a lot, a wide variety of information. You'll see on page 43 and 44, the history of the millage levies from the district, starting back in the 1969-70 school year, which is interesting to see. In that year, a millage rate of 11.91 mils was assessed, and through the years, you'll see that the millage went down. The lowest rate that we have is for the 1982-83 year, which was 6.241 mils. Went back up in the early '90s, and now we're dropping back again, where the total millage rate being proposed tonight is 6.272 mils. And that's the combination of the four different millage rates that you all will be reading later. Again, looking back in the book, you'll see that each fund you have towards the end of that fund, you'll see how those dollars relate back to the strategic plan. So you'll be able to see that those dollars are all tied in some way or another to the strategic plan. So that was really where I wanted to go with this, just to give you an overview of the documents that are out there. And again, this we cannot put on the, as a board financial report on our website until you approve it. But once you approve it, we will quickly get it loaded on the website for you and for the public.
I have a question. I may have missed it. Did you say anything about the rolled-back rate?
Our chair, our board chair, read the statement in before I started.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penner.
Thank you.
So I'm going to move on now to item number two, which is the public hearing regarding the final 2022 millage rates. This will be an open meeting for the board to hear public comments regarding the final millage rates and answered questions related thereto. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you need to begin to summarize. You must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. To the audience, please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sounds of approval or disapproval, including clapping. That is according to Florida statute 1001.372 per N3. So call the first person forward, please, Mr. Edwards.
Barbara Vaughn, Melissa Bakandi on deck.
My name is Barbara Vaughn, and as you all know, it gives me great displeasure that this meeting is not ordinarily opened with prayer. So I have decided to use part of my time, every time I speak, to thank God for the people who are here, particularly those in the audience who care enough to come and listen in on what's going on, on behalf of their children. So Father God, I ask you to be with these parents and these citizens, be with these board members, as some of them leave and go on to other phases of their lives. Thank you, Father God. Amen. Now, I would like to ask one basic question. I don't understand how you can go to the county and ask for a certain amount of money when you have not finalized your budget, and so you don't have any idea, or maybe just the roughest idea, of what you're going to need to spend. I think the opposite should be true. You should draw up a budget with the least that you can manage with, and then go to the people to pay for it, not the other way around. I get my bill as a homeowner, and it gives me three choices about if it stays the same, if it raises by this much, or raises by this much. How can we do the cost to the taxpayer before we know what the school system needs to spend to do your job in a year? If somebody could answer that in this public meeting, I think a lot of us would appreciate it. Thank you.
Melissa Bakandi, School Board members, Dr. Asplin. Shirley Brown said that if the school board passes the highest millage rate allowed by the state, taxes would actually be going down. This is fake news. What Ms. Brown forgot to mention is that property values have doubled in Sarasota, and our total tax bill will be almost double what it used to be. The state of Florida has even recognized that the school district has a surplus of money and that they are overtaxing us. But you liberal school board members love to take our money, and where does it go? Well, I'm glad you asked. To pay for Tom, Jane, and Shirley to take vacations in the name of school board business, to pay for Dr. Asplin's pay raise so he can afford his waterfront condo, to pay Mr. DeLeo and his law firm an unprecedented $1.3 million in legal fees to fight families, to pay $12 million in fines for violating the governor's mask mandate, to pay lawsuit after lawsuit, such as the DJ case in which the judge found systemic corruption in this school district, to pay Dr. Harriet Moore and her Equity Committee to make sure Black Lives Matter are not forgotten, and finally, to pay for SEL Curriculum Character Strong to make our kids good global citizens and hate America. What you have provided as a budget is truly laughable. Have you shown a true need with numbers and statistics? No, your budget is like a skeleton summary with no details to support that summary. Even worse, the public has been asking to see the detailed budget since July. Notice was received yesterday via FOIA request that the budget won't be released until September 30. Now, let's digest this. This woke school board wants to levy the highest possible tax rate, without the public being able to see the real budget. What disdain for taxpayers. Superintendent Asplin has already lied twice in the past two meetings. We trust nothing you say. This woke school board wants to tax you at the highest possible rate, but won't allow you to walk your kids into school. This neo-Marxist school board wants to tax you at the highest possible rate, while Mr. Edwards works from the inside to get a special interest groups to groom our kids while parents are kept in the dark. Families can't afford food and gas or housing, and you want more money without even showing us the budget.
Thank you. Our hearing of citizens on the millage rate. Next up is the adoption of the final millage rate. Mrs. Ziegler, are you there?
I am, but I can vote by online. I should be able to.
Okay, that's what I was just checking. So the
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The question is the adoption of the 2022 final millage rate, and that the following millage rate be adopted as presented, required local effort 3.024 mils, discretionary operating 0.748 mils, capital 1.5 mils, voted operating 1 mil, total millage 6.272 mils. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the 2022 final millage rates as presented.
I have a second. Hearing none.
I second the motion.
Mrs. Brown.
These are the rights that are sent to us from the state of Florida on how they came up with the budgets that they gave to the school districts. The 1 mil voted operating was supported by over 80% of the voters in March, and so I support the millage as presented.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we can vote electronically. Please vote. Mine hasn't come up yet.
Mine came up with the totals rather than my ability to vote.
Mine isn't up. Not working.
What do you want me to do? What do you want me to do?
Hit refresh right, refresh right here.
No, not that.
Yeah. It's not coming up yet. She wasn't on it. Let's do a voice vote if we can.
This isn't working, so let's have a voice vote. I'll call on you individually. Mrs. Ziegler?
No.
Mrs. Rose?
No.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes by three to two, with two dissents from Mrs. Rose and Mrs. Ziegler. The next item is the public hearing regarding the 2022-23 final budget. Mr. Edwards, would you call the first person, please?
Melissa Bakandi, Scott Brown on deck.
I actually didn't think I was going to be able to speak twice, but I will gladly speak twice. I think it's really ridiculous and irresponsible that you can vote on a millage rate. Shirley, Jane, Tom, you will be held accountable when taxpayers vote again, because you're voting on something that has not been shown to be needed. We have unending COVID dollars, we have referendum money, and now we have property taxes that are through the roof because of property values. And you have shown no need to raise, to raise our taxes and ask for the maximum rate. And Shirley, you can't even look at me, because you know exactly what I'm talking about. I know you're upset, but it is the truth. And how shameful that you, these are taxpayers, and you're just wasting our money like it's water. And so I just, I just want to let you know, you will be held accountable, and that, and that the community is watching. As far as budget, there's no transparency, and I don't know how you can even sit up there and act like we should trust you. There's no transparency. Where are the school breakdowns in the budget? How do we know what administrative jobs there are versus teaching jobs? How do we know what mental health money has gone, where this money has gone? Anyway, we are paying attention, and as you've seen this year, we will keep paying attention. And I hope you have a great retirement. I hear the Villages is a great place for retirement. Maybe you guys will be lucky enough to have a place like that.
Scott Brown?
My name is Scott Brown, and my beautiful wife Karen and I have chosen to raise our family here in Sarasota. We have our businesses here in Sarasota. Our children have all been educated here, and we're being educated currently in Sarasota. The budget process drives absolutely everything that goes into our schools. Denying the public to have the ability to see where you're allocating the dollars provides no assurance the taxpayer money is being spent to support the initiatives that are necessary to improve outcomes for our students and ensure that they are building strong public schools. It is impossible for the public to offer meaningful input in the budget process when the only information available is a summary of the bottom-line numbers of $1.4 billion. You are stewards of public money and are held to a higher standard of providing information for public oversight. We, the public, should be able to review information at any time and understand where our dollars are being spent and the specific items, programs, and resources they are funding. Transparency and accountability are necessary to build trust with this community. For us personally, we have a nonverbal autistic child who requires additional supports and services to receive an appropriate education, making sure that the educators that work with him have access to training, curriculum, and other sources to provide him the education he deserves, is my why for speaking here tonight. When teachers and staff continue to tell us they don't have resources, and we get this a lot, we have the right to see the details of this budget to understand your decisions and priorities. This is a generous community who has recently approved a referendum that will provide millions and millions of dollars each year. We also have an increasing tax base, as was discussed a few minutes ago, as property values escalate at rapid rate. You're getting three additional sources of money, a referendum, and an increased tax base, and COVID money. The bottom line is the choices you propose through our budget process will raise people's taxes. Without access to the complete budget, it's impossible for us to understand what shortfalls you are trying to offset. I implore you to reduce the rate and show us
Madam Chair, that concludes public comments.
Thank you. Next up is the adoption of the budget amendment. May I have a motion, please?
Even if someone votes against something, they can still make a motion so that we can vote on it. But I will make the motion to adopt the budget amendments. Is that what we're doing first?
Yes.
The budget amendments for 2022-23 that we discussed.
Any discussion, Mrs. Brown?
No.
No discussion? Anyone else for any discussion? We'll do a voice vote?
I'm up. I don't know.
Oh, I thought
I can vote now.
Oh, well, I don't know that mine is working. Let's, let's see. I did refresh it. Mine isn't working. We'll do a voice vote. It's, oh, here, it just came up. Okay, so all those, please vote now. And the motion carries four to one, with Mrs. Rose dissenting. And the motion carries four to one with Mrs. Rose dissenting. Let's go on to item number six, please. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I make a motion for the adoption of the 22-23 final budget.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
I have discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Mrs. Brown?
On the millage that we voted on previously and during the discussion, it was that I wasn't being truthful or something. I brought my taxes with me. My school board taxes went down from last year, even though I did have the 3% property increase. We had property increases. A lot of the increased property values we had for this county had to do with new construction that we had. We had a lot of new construction. We got a lot of new students. Whereas my total property, my tax bill went up $46.02, I'm like, well, how can that be if these rates went down? It went down 44.87. Of course, you had to add these up to get it. And if you turned to the back of the page, those taxes went up $90.89. That was for fire rescues, solid waste service, and stormwater utility. They... The legislature said this is how we present the tax bills for... So I don't blame some people for not understanding what their tax bill said. My taxes for schools went down, and the overall taxes for the ad valorem taxes went down 44.87. And it was the non-ad valorem taxes of $90.89 that actually increased my tax bill for 46.02. It wasn't the school district taxes that raised it. On our agenda today, there was attached... There were attachments. The thing was 389 pages. If you wanted to see how we were allocating these dollars, you could pull it up, or you could even print it out. We don't print all of those things out for everyone to pick up one. We wouldn't know how many would want one. But, you know, you could print out all 389 or just look at them online to see where we're spending those dollars. More importantly, we have workshops throughout the year where we're looking at our budget. The same thing as the state does. The state looks at their budget and see how they're going to go. When we, as a board, just as the state legislature, when they're looking at the budget, they don't itemize every expenditure. And I'm sure that when the county commission does their budget, they don't list how many new boots they had to get for firefighters. Those details aren't in the budget. Those are in expense reports later on. Those are on board when we're having contracts that we're approving. They're in discussions that we have at workshops. You want to know how we're spending the dollars in the classroom? We had a workshop this afternoon on the goal one and what we're doing in our schools. And they talked about... Because we don't say exactly when we write the budget how each school is going to use those. We had a thing called Pick a Position that we gave the school districts, the schools in our district. And they could pick a position. And then we had some other funds that were allowed to be spent on the school level. Right now, we're not telling them how they spend it, but they were glad that we gave them that flexibility. There is so much information in this, and this is what you would have gotten printed out if you wanted it on the agenda. They can't post it as the budget on the site until we approve it. But if you looked at the agenda for today, I mean, this was on it. I mean, you would have had to, you know, put it together as a book yourself. We're not going to do that for you. But we have expenses. Our teachers have expenses. Our staff has expenses. We all do. We all know that. I pay these taxes, and I think everyone here, I think are property owners. And we pay our taxes. We're not wasting these dollars that we're spending. And we've talked about how we're spending these dollars at our workshops. You can go back into our workshops and look at them where we talked about what items we are going to prioritize. And one of the items that we wanted to prioritize was new pre-K classes. Yeah, that's costing more. And that's in here somewhere on how much that's going to cost. You know, there's a lot of details that we talked about individually at these workshops as we were building the budget. But a lot of the budget is recurring from we know how many teachers we had last year, and this year we're going to increase or decrease the number of teachers we're going to have, the number of this we're going to have, and what else we're going to do. Those are things that were discussed in workshops. It's not what we're discussing today, all those details. Those were discussed in workshops. And if... And I wouldn't, you know, fault anyone for not being able to understand everything that's in here if they didn't sit through those workshops. And even at that, it's difficult to understand a school budget because it's difficult to understand even how the legislature comes up with the funding for the schools. It takes time and effort to figure out what they do. And even members of the legislature, a lot of them don't understand how that works. It's complicated. I think I had a sheet here. This sheet here tells how the legislature calculates how much the districts get. And that's how they calculate what our...
FEFP.
Our FEFP. That's what the Florida Education Finance Plan. That's how they come up with what our required local effort is.
That's in the book.
That's there. The required local effort and the discretionary millage. It all is part of this. And the 1.5 capital and the 1.0 voted millage. I mean, we told... I mean, we had a lot of discussions when we were out asking for the voters to give us that 1 mil. And we heard what the voters said then. Over 80%. Do you remember what the percentage is? 85%? Said, yes. Yes. We want you to raise that 1 mil again to provide for our students. That was 85% of the people who voted want to support our schools. And I encourage you to go home and go back and look at what we did this morning, this afternoon. Talked about how we're saving dollars on our health plans and what we're doing with those dollars in our classrooms. You don't learn what we're doing at the board meeting. You learn what we're doing at the workshops. And I've asked the superintendent to maybe bring some of that workshop material to the board. Yeah, we might have to listen to it twice. But the public needs to know what we're doing in our classrooms. And what we heard this afternoon was remarkable. I encourage you to watch that. Watch what we did in our workshop today. You don't have to watch all of it when we were talking about audit committees and all of that. But the first hour was about the health plans, whether or not you want to listen to that. But the next two hours was all about our achievement and what we're doing and what our schools are doing. Look at that. That's how we're spending our dollars. And we don't put in our budget how many reams of paper we buy for each school. That's just not the details we get into in this budget. That's not what we're going to find anywhere in our budgets. We don't do that. We look at what dollars are assigned to different categories. And there's all kinds of details in this. But I don't know if any of you even downloaded any of this that you could make marks on. I mean, but at least did you look at it? There's so much information in here. And I encourage you, if you haven't already looked at what's attached to this agenda today for voting, more so than that, go back to what the workshop was and see the work of the district through what we do at that workshop because that's what's important. That's how we spend our money. And I am proud to say that I support what we're doing in this district and the direction we're going.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. I will just say this. We're the second-largest employer in the county, and we do things very, very well. This book and the way that we adopt our budget has received numerous accolades and awards on the national level. So if we were doing anything inappropriate, you know that Tallahassee would be on our case immediately. Tallahassee and the legislature decides what millage rates we have based on the TRIM notices that have come out from the Appraiser's Office in early July. They gave us a number at the last hour on the 19th of July, which was the last day they could give us any information. And since then, our poor finance department has been scrambling to do things and to be doing things quickly and appropriately. And I want to thank the finance department, some of who were in the audience, Mrs. Penner and her staff for all of the great work that you've been doing because it doesn't go unnoticed. And section under finance in this book, financial section, would be a great section for you all to read because it would put a lot of questions that you might have. It would answer those for you. So with that, I will say, sis... Yes, Ms. Brown? All right.
This is something I said back in 2006 when I was first elected, the first budget. We had some board members voting no. And I discussed, you know, well, rather than voting no, why aren't you offering an amendment? If you offered amendment to what it was you would accept, then we'd have something to talk about and sort of explain. If you're going to take money from here, you got to put it there. And if you're going to change the millage rate, which changes the dollars that you're going to collect, tell us what you're going to cut. And, you know, and I think before someone votes no, they ought to be able to do that. If you're going to reduce a millage rate and you're going to cut the funding to the school by $5 million, $10 million, $20 million, whatever it is you want to cut the tax rate by, tell me what in the budget you want to cut. And, you know, and it's not some ridiculous vacations that board members go to when they go to legislative conferences. Be specific. I mean, because that $5,000 doesn't amount to enough. I mean, you got to come up with $20 million in exchanges. Tell me that. Tell me what teachers you want to cut. Tell me what programs you want to cut. Oh, you don't want us to do pre-K? Okay. But tell me what you don't want.
Hearing no other discussion, please vote. And the motion carries three to two. I cannot believe that anyone would vote against this. But I will leave that as the end of this meeting and say we are adjourned.